Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to call to order the April 25, 2016 meeting of the Dover City Council. I ask you to please rise for an invocation by Councilman David Anderson, followed by the pledge to our nation's flag led by Councilman Hutchinson.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together. We thank you for the opportunity to serve this great city. We ask that you give each person wisdom and that you help us to do the best job possible. In your name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, you have before you this evening's agenda. Are there any additions or additions to the agenda?
Mr. President, if not, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Seconded. Then moved by Councilman Hutchinson and seconded by Councilman Cole to approve the agenda as printed and distributed. Any discussion on the item? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. And I have before us the consent agenda. Those items on the council agenda which are considered routine and non-controversial are marked with an asterisk and will be acted upon by a single roll call vote of council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of council so requests, in which event the matter shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered a separate item. What is the pleasure of council?
So moved.
Second.
Well, I like number seven, removed.
Councilman Lewis has requested item number seven to be removed. Are there any other changes to the consent agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Anderson, seconded by Councilman Neils. Are there any discussion on the matter? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hostfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Item number two is the certificate of congratulations for the 2016 excellence in downtown revitalization for Gregory V. Moore P.E. and Becker Morgan Group for outstanding downtown community partner for the city of Dover. I would invite Mayor Christensen, the economic development director, Neaton is here, and Mr. Greg Moore to the podium for the presentation, and request the city clerk to read the certificate into the record.
Whereas, over the years, Becker Morgan Group has played an integral role in downtown Dover redevelopment and has prepared architectural plans for several major projects in the downtown area such as North Street Improvements, Lockerman Way Plaza, 2224 West Lockerman Street, and the former Acme Site at 120 South Governors Avenue. Their staff has assisted with marketing downtown sites for development and provided extensive inclined services in support of multiple projects in the city of Dover Downtown Development District. Whereas, Mr. Gregory V. Moore P.E., Vice President of Becker Morgan Group, has served as President of the Downtown Dover Partnership since 2010, and members of Becker Morgan Group's staff have served on the partnership's design, economic development, and parking committees. Whereas, during the 2016 Downtown Delaware Revitalize Conference hosted by the Delaware Economic Development Office, Mr. Gregory V. Moore and Becker Morgan Group were presented with the Excellence in Downtown Revitalization Award for Outstanding Downtown Community Partner for the City of Dover. Awards were bestowed on those who best embody downtown Delaware's mission of providing our state's historic downtown communities and small businesses with tools to revitalize their commercial districts, increase entrepreneurism and innovation, and enhance the quality of place. Now therefore, the mayor and council of the city of Dover, Delaware, hereby present the certificate of congratulations to Gregory V. Moore P.E. and Becker Morgan Group upon receiving this significant award, recognizing their dedication and commitment to transforming the vision of a vibrant downtown Dover into a reality.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President and Madam Clerk. Mr. Neaton is here to receive these certificates of appreciation from the mayor and council on behalf of the Downtown Dover Partnership of which Mr. Moore and Becker Morgan are integral parts. So I'd like to present you to these certificates. Please relay to Greg. I'm sure he already knows that we greatly appreciate his dedication in the revitalization of our downtown area. He is a pioneer. He is a gentleman that has many, many items on his plate that he still finds time to donate, and his company finds time to donate efforts to the city that he's grown up in and that he loves.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of Greg Moore, unfortunately Greg is actually working tonight. He's making a presentation down in Georgetown for his company, but he wants me to express his appreciation for this award. And I will tell you, having worked with Greg over the last almost eight years, it has been truly a pleasure to work with a gentleman who has a vision like Greg, who has the thoughts and work ethic to make downtown Dover a better place. And I appreciate this and I accept the award on his behalf.
Thank you. Agenda item 2B is the certificate of congratulations for the 2016 excellence in downtown revitalization for Cameron Llewellyn, contractor of the Best Historic Preservation Project, 6 South State Street. I would invite Mr. Llewellyn to join Mayor Christensen at the podium, and I would request the city clerk to please read the certificate into the record.
Whereas, Mr. Cameron Llewellyn, President of Tide Mark Construction, served as a contractor for Baird Mandalas Brockstat LLC's renovation of the historic property at 6 South State Street in the city of Dover Historic District. By exercising his professional skills, ingenuity, and craftsmanship, he transformed the structure into a modern and functional office space while retaining a deep respect for the rich character of the past. And whereas, during the 2016 Downtown Delaware Revitalize Conference hosted by the Delaware Economic Development Office, Mr. Cameron Llewellyn was chosen from a field of worthy competitors to receive the Excellence in Downtown Revitalization Award for Best Historic Preservation Project. Awards were bestowed on those who best embody downtown Delaware's mission of providing our state's historic downtown communities and small businesses with tools to revitalize their commercial districts, increase entrepreneurism and innovation, and enhance the quality of place. Now therefore, the mayor and council of the city of Dover, Delaware, hereby present this certificate of congratulations to Cameron Llewellyn upon receiving this prestigious award, recognizing his contribution to revitalizing downtown Dover and preserving the rich heritage of its past.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President, Madam Clerk. Gentlemen, it gives me great honor to present these certificates of appreciation and recognition of your accomplishments and your commitment to downtown Dover and its revitalization. And I think you exemplify the spirit and the vision that I think everyone in this room has, and we're greatly appreciative of you for your efforts, and we're looking for project number two to come along. Cameron.
It can't go without mention that Attorney Baird had a vision to save that beautiful structure from the wrecking ball, and there weren't many people that were as brave as Mr. Baird, and it was a pleasure working with him through the project. And we're not going to kid anybody, there were some stressful days, and we became very good friends through the project, and it's an accomplishment. The sad part about an old building like that is it's never done.
Yeah, that's true. So, well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, members of the council. Thank you all very much for this award. It's been a pleasure. I'd like to give a special thanks to Ann Marie Townsend, Scott Koenig, and their entire staff. We could not have done this project without the support of the city, without the support of the mayor, the members of this council, and the staff here. So Cameron did a great job, but we could not have done the job without the vision of the city and the members of this council. So I truly do thank you. The second project is now underway. We've acquired the building behind us, and we're going to try to continue to bring jobs to the city of Dover and, you know, continue to revitalize that district and make it something that the city and we can all be proud of. Thank you very much.
Mr. Baird, don't go away. Item number three on the agenda is certificate for Baird Mandalas Brockstat LLC for the very same project. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I kind of jumped the gun. I was so excited to hand out these certificates, but I was even more excited to find out that they're going to do another project. So Madam Clerk, I think the reading has already been sufficient. We know...oh, you want to read it into the minutes? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. President, I yield.
We're an official bunch here. We're going to have it read at the record.
Sounds great, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Whereas, construction of Dr. Henry Ridgely's personal residence located at 6 South State Street, Dover, Delaware, was completed in 1869 and has since undergone many changes in ownership, occupancy, and use over the years. And whereas, Baird Mandalas Brockstat LLC purchased this property and arranged for remodeling and renovations to be done with sensitivity to the rich character of the building and in keeping with the property's memorable past and prominent location in the city's historic district. For their efforts, Baird Mandalas Brockstat LLC received the 2015 James P. Jackson Award for Historic Preservation. And whereas, Baird Mandalas Brockstat LLC further honors 6 South State Street by occupying this cultural and architectural landmark that is prominently featured on postcards and marketing materials that showcase the attractions of downtown Dover. Now therefore, the mayor and council of the city of Dover, Delaware, hereby present this certificate of appreciation to Baird Mandalas Brockstat LLC in acknowledgement of their significant investment in the community and their commitment to improving the vitality of downtown Dover.
Thank you, Mr. President, Madam Clerk, for reading that in. We'll recreate the presentation. Sorry about that, folks. I'm a little rusty here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. It's a pleasure.
I think we'd be remiss also if we didn't take a moment to thank both Mr. Llewellyn and Mr. Baird for, not just for opening your businesses here in Dover, but for keeping them in the downtown area. We appreciate your business here. Please let us know if there's anything we can do to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the recognition.
Agenda item number four is presentation. Mayor's selection for the Jefferson Awards Lead 360 Challenge. Mr. Mayor, what are you up to with this?
Thank you, Mr. President, Madam Clerk, members of council. Please bear with us. You know, the Lead 360 Awards are part of the Jefferson Award Project, which I'm sure that you are all familiar with, and it recognizes, the Lead 360 Awards recognize young folks who have committed their selves to the community with service to others. It is with great pleasure this evening, and I will try to expedite this along because I know the council has a lot of important business to conduct, but I think it's necessary for us as a community, and myself as mayor, and also the members of the council, that we recognize the young folks who contributed so much to our community and have been recognized by the Lead 360 Awards Program. These young men and women who will come before you this evening are the future leaders of the city of Dover, Kent County, state of Delaware, and the United States of America. And if you have the opportunity to review the projects and their commitment to their projects, you will see that you and I and everyone in this room will know that our country has future leaders that will take this country to where it needs to go. So without further ado, I'd like to also recognize in this very council chamber that we actually have a Jefferson Award winner, a national Jefferson Award winner. So I would ask him to step forward and assist us in the presentation of these Lead 360 Awards to these young folks who will be our future leaders. Councilman Lewis.
I'm Diane Bogle. I'm the Delaware Program Manager for the Jefferson Awards. I'm joined this evening by Michelle Faidance, who's the executive, National Regional Executive Director overseeing Florida and Delaware. And this evening, we have also Olivia Kersey, who's an intern at the University of Delaware, which is going to do our presentation for us this evening. I'd like to thank Mayor Christensen and the council this evening and the city of Dover for allowing us the opportunity to partner with you.
All right. There we go. So the Lead 360 Challenge is an initiative of the Jefferson Awards Foundation, which is one of the largest youth service contests in America. The challenge taps into the energy and idealism of young people and encourages and facilitates them to share their stories of service with millions. The winner of Lead 360 in 2014 was 16-year-old Georgetown Delaware native Emma Ryder, who gathered 80,000 pairs of donated shoes, which in turn powered clean water to 37 African communities. To date, Lead 360 has seen more than 6,000 projects and big ideas, more than 100,000 votes on social media to determine our national winners this year, more than a million impressions on Twitter and Instagram, and in 2015 impacted more than nine million lives at a financial value of $12 million. This year, we had seven mayors in Delaware commit to host and promote the Lead 360 Challenge in their city, and we appreciate their continued support. So in Delaware this year, there were a total of 92 projects, 45,242 volunteers, over 200,000 volunteer hours, over 300,000 lives impacted, which all led to over a $4 million financial impact in the state of Delaware. In our Phase II activation, we had 13 projects completed, which impacted over 58,000 lives and led to over a $350,000 financial value. We are now going to start recognizing our participants. First, we have two big ideas from Brianna Abdahaly and Naya Richardson, who could not be here with us tonight, but we recognize their big ideas, and Mayor Christensen challenges each of our idea submissions to be activated and submitted as projects for next year. First, we have the Fairview Elementary School Voices of Unity Choir. The Voices of Unity Choir at Fairview Elementary is a group of talented young students who have performed at various locations across Delaware and promote a positive sense of community. Congratulations.
If there are any audience members who want to come down and take pictures, you're more than welcome to come down onto the floor to take those pictures.
Smile.
Thank you. She's the first Dover High School. Dover High School started a chapter of She's the First, which is a club that donates scholarship money, textbooks, and uniforms so that girls in underprivileged nations can get an education. Congratulations. Chase Christensen, Safety Patrol. Chase is a lieutenant for the Safety Patrol at South Dover Elementary School. Chase always has a smile on his face, and he comes into school early and stays late to ensure the safety of his peers. Congratulations.
Thank you, Chase. Please.
Congratulations. Asia Clay. Asia is a member of the Delaware Prevention Coalition, a youth prevention frontliner, a member of the Four Girls Only Luncheon, and the Boys and Girls Club, a Sunday School teacher, praise dance leader, Meals on Wheels volunteer, and has attended several leadership conferences. And unfortunately, Asia couldn't be with us tonight, but congratulations. Senators in Action, Central Middle School. The Senators in Action Club has held fundraisers and sold handmade goods to raise a total of $1,000 this year, of which they donated $750 to Walter Badley Hall, a transitional housing facility for homeless men who have restarted their lives at the Dover Interfaith Shelter. Congratulations. Holy Cross Knitting Club. The Holy Cross Knitting Club has already donated more than 250 knitted hats this year. They donate the hats and other knitted items attached with cards and words of encouragement to recipients. Congratulations.
Everybody in the picture? All right, everybody look at the camera. Three, everybody smile. One, two, three, smile.
Hold on, hold on. We got a lot of pictures. We got a lot of pictures.
You were ahead. Congratulations, girls. Good job.
Landon Bailey and the Men of Color Alliance. Landon has given back to his community by empowering youth through coaching Little League Baseball. He is also a member of the Men of Color Alliance, which reaches out to young men to influence them positively at a critical time in their lives. Congratulations. Grace took a mission trip to Virginia to volunteer at a homeless shelter and at the homes of elderly citizens. During her most recent trip, she was able to work with a team and help restore the porch of an elderly woman. Congratulations. The JDG Middle School students volunteered at the Food Bank of Delaware and held food drives at their schools. Congratulations. These students come from Positive Outcomes, Chipmunt Middle School, and Smyrna Middle School. Weston Williams. 4-H Club member Weston Williams collected 4,500 books and distributed them to Mom House, Shepherd Place, People Place, Bay Health Memorial Hospital, and others to encourage people to read more. Unfortunately, Weston is not with us tonight, but congratulations. Mariah and Kirsten Todd. Sisters Mariah and Kirsten Todd organized a competition between grade levels at their school to raise money during dress-down days. Students paid to dress down, and they also sold ice pops. In the past two years, they have raised enough money for 91 clean water filters for the Global Aid Network. Congratulations.
Good job.
Stars Program. Congratulations to the mayor's top project, the William Henry Middle School Stars Program. The Stars Program is a group of students who select service projects Weston Williams. 4-H Club member Weston Williams collected 4,500 books and distributed them to Mom House, Shepherd Place, People Place, Bay Health Memorial Hospital, and others to encourage people to read more. Unfortunately, Weston is not with us tonight, but congratulations. Mariah and Kirsten Todd. Sisters Mariah and Kirsten Todd organized a competition between grade levels at their school to raise money during dress-down days. Students paid to dress down, and they also sold ice pops. In the past two years, they have raised enough money for 91 clean water filters for the Global Aid Network. Congratulations. Stars Program. Congratulations to the Mayor's Top Project, the William Henry Middle School Stars Program. The Stars Program is a group of students who select service projects to undertake as a group. The group collected hats, gloves, and blankets, and raised $350 to donate to the Governor's Advisory Council for exceptional children. Congratulations again to the Mayor's Top Project. This project represented the city of Dover at our statewide ceremony in Wilmington on April 18th. Congratulations. Congratulations. We also wanted to recognize our Phase Two results. Thank you to the Delaware State University Office of Student Leadership, who donated 429 bags of food. Congratulations. Thank you and congratulations also to the Delaware State Police, who donated 584 bags of food. This year, in the city of Dover alone, we had 13 project submissions, over 2,000 volunteers, over 9,000 volunteer hours, and over 12,000 lives impacted, which led to $199,000 financial impact. Thank you and congratulations to the city of Dover. We also wanted to recognize our national finalists from Delaware. Out of all the Lead 360 projects submitted in the entire country this year, five of them were from Delaware. So congratulations to those. And thank you to all of the organizations across the state of Delaware who activated last year's winning service projects. Our Phase Two Delaware winners this year were For Dream Boxes Delaware State Police, The Future Isn't Hungry St. George's High School, and Gear Going Global, also to St. George's High School. Thank you for going above and beyond to activate last year's winning service projects. This year's projects were chosen in February during our social media contest as our nationally winning projects. We encourage everyone around the country to activate one or more of these in our community for maximum impact during 2016. Kickin' Violence distributes Survivor Packs to survivors of domestic violence. Score on Hunger pledges $1 for each point or goal scored in any sporting event. And Teddy Grahams for Troops donates teddy bears and cards to active-duty and veterans. We would like to invite community members of all ages to participate again in our national service movement. You can visit our Lead 360 website to learn more about these projects and how to get involved. We will track the collective impact of these projects over the course of the year, and those who make the biggest impact will be given a Jefferson Award. We can't wait to see how Dover will get involved. Thank you again tonight to Mayor Robin Christensen, City Council, and all our Lead 360 participants.
Thank you very much. We now have Agenda Item 7, Semi-Annual Inspection by the City Manager of the Robbins Hose Company. Councilman Lewis had asked for this to be pulled off the agenda.
Yes, sir. I just have a question for Mr. Koenig, our city manager, with respect to number seven on this report. I read the report fully, and on number seven, I would just like you to give us a more precise explanation of the proposed incentive on this topic, which is potential property tax credit.
Councilman Lewis, this is a follow-up to a discussion I had with former Chief Hall during the last semi-annual inspection. He mentioned an idea of a potential property tax credit where members of the Robbins Hose Company who were volunteers and met certain criterias could potentially qualify for a property tax credit in the city of Dover. The way it was left with Chief Hall was that the Robbins Hose Company would need to make a proposal to the city for that type of consideration. And as it indicates in the text of this, no action has been taken by Robbins Hose Company on this subject since the discussion with Chief Hall. So it is currently up to Robbins Hose Company, if they would like to pursue this, to make some type of proposal to the city of Dover as to the number of members that potentially live in the city limits, and also what type of property tax credit or relief that they would be seeking as an incentive. So at this point, I consider the ball in the fire department's court. But certainly, if they would like to make a proposal, I would support it coming to council for discussion.
Okay, I saw that no action was taken on it. I was just curious. What's your position on it? It may be premature, but...
At this point, I do not have a position on it. This was an idea that the chief had brought up to help encourage potential membership in Robbins Hose Company, because membership is always a discussion that we have during the semi-annual inspection. The chief, or the former chief, indicated that he thought this would be potentially an incentive to encourage more people to be active volunteers in the fire department.
If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lewis, second by Councilman Anderson. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda Item Number Eight is a progress report on the Youth Advisory Committee's reporting of their minutes. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. There had been a priority to fixing a problem that definitely existed. And that problem has been... We can produce quite a bit of progress in resolving it, and that's with the minutes. But there is some additional help that can be useful. Members of the committee came back with what they would request. It's they're in a unique situation. They're the... Currently, it seems they're the only city committee that takes their own minutes. There's not a... There's... At one point, the Human Relations Commission did, but that's no longer the case. So what they need is a few things. One, if they're to be responsible for that, there's nothing that says in their legislation to take minutes, they are to maintain them a copy. So what... Here's what they ask. They ask for one training, because there's been a problem that before the current chair took over and made this a priority, there's been a problem with the secretary, which the secretary is no longer even part of the committee. There's a temporary secretary now that is just wasn't available because of scheduling conflicts at times or didn't get items back. So what they want is training, one-time training. Five active members have all volunteered for it, so that if anyone has something come up, they're sick, they go to a... A game runs long. Some other activity that anyone can confidently take minutes. And that's a... And they also request some training on other items from the... It's just the basic... Some questions that they may have on parliamentary procedure or the handout that was sent them. So basically, they've given a request for one time where all of them would come in on May 2nd, early before the meeting, to be able to obtain that training. Currently, the current minutes are up to date. They request assistance that if... For the future, that they'd be able to essentially get somebody contracted to assist in taking minutes. And that way, someone for a small amount would be responsible for attending. And if they weren't, of course, then you'd have at least five volunteers who'd be trained to do it. But then you'd have somebody who'd be responsible to the secretary for providing that, which would be provided, of course, to the clerk's office. And that would be for the next fiscal year, not this fiscal year. The requested budget for that would be $1,000, which would basically allow a small stipend per meeting for that person and for their preparation time. And essentially, that would cover for the full year. That is basically the request that the committee has, because it is in that unique situation. It's in a situation that we don't expect the pensions committee to be in. We don't expect the adjustments committee to be in. We don't expect... And this is a committee that unlike the others, none of the people are paid. So we don't expect the paid committees to do what we're expecting a volunteer committee to do. So they're willing to take that, but they just ask for a minor amount of help, which starts with a one-time training. And I... But so far, I think they've done an adequate job in the last couple months in keeping these up to date. And there are recordings, which part of the action plan is to get those up to date as well, so that everything will be sufficiently done.
Any questions for Mr. Anderson? Councilman Sutter.
When the city orchestrated the Youth Advisory Committee, to your knowledge, was there ever any minutes taker present or discussion about a budget for minutes taker?
In the original time, it was around... Well, it was around 2010, '11. And during that timeframe, you may remember, if you're following the city, that there was a staffing issue with the clerk's office. The clerk's office at the time, the then-city manager didn't object to them being fully staffed at four, and they only had three members. So taking on additional... An additional committee would have been substantially burdensome. Fortunately, and of course, we're not even proposing that now, by the way. And you remember, the Human Relations Commission at that time went to a contract instead of the clerk's office because of that issue. A contract that took the minutes. And what happened was that fortunately, at that time, there was a member of the committee who was very skilled at secretarial activity. And that person did a fine job, from what I could see, at taking the minutes. And that's a... You know, and sometimes you get that in a volunteer group, but when you're not recruiting... But when you're recruiting for a membership and not a position, sometimes it's a little bit harder to do. We had someone like that, but that person, because of a change of schools, dropped from the committee. And that's... And the replacement has been extraordinarily difficult to maintain. But in the last... Basically, because of the importance of it, there have been two members of the committee who have taken on minutes as an additional duty. But that's the... Do you have any other questions?
One more question. Being that this is a city-recognized committee, my concern is about FOIA Act and information being processed within a timely manner and not reflecting, having a negative reflection on the city. So I would suggest that possibly we should look into providing them a minutes taker, since they are recognized as a committee of the city of Dover. Or maybe we need a legal opinion. I really don't know the depth of the Youth Advisory Committee in its relation to the city of Dover.
Might be best... My suggestion would be, because the request for funding is for the next fiscal year, is that we have these discussions as part of the putting together the budget for fiscal '17. If we need to have discussions prior to that, we can direct them to the proper committee, which would be Legislative Finance Administration Committee.
Thank you, Council President.
A pleasure, pleasure.
I do think that this year... But... Oh, sorry.
Councilman Hare.
I think if you look back, when this committee was formed, it was a volunteer committee. It wasn't something that the council said, "We want this committee. We want to go out." They were all volunteers, and when it was started, it was... They were charged with... They had to take their minutes. And if they're unable to do that... I mean, like I said, like Council President Slavin said, it's up to go to the budget to see if we want to afford money for it. But I think there was something there. We're supposed to take their minutes, and it's been done for years. I don't know where the problem... I mean, they... But I just want to bring that up.
It's... Once again...
Councilman Anderson.
If you look at the enabling legislation, it is the best... It doesn't say anything with taking minutes, but you do... But it is about maintaining the copy. So that's... But there is a... You know, it's one of those things that it would be best... There's the best way approached. The council has ways to look at it. There are ways to recruit people. There are ways to recruiting adult volunteers. Many ways to do that, but if you... But it's up to the council. This is a very sensible recommendation, and I think it should be accepted. I think they discussed it well. They discussed it significantly, and I think they've come up with a very good compromise that would solve practically every objection. And it starts with volunteer training.
Might be best to entertain a motion to send this item to the Legislative Finance Administration Committee for further discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Removed by Councilman Sutter, second by Councilman Hosfeld to send this item to the Legislative Finance Administration Committee for further discussion and a possible recommendation for the fiscal '17 budget. Three other discussions.
My final comment is, the reason why I believe that it does need to be discussed is because if they're going to have a title of a city entity or a straight relationship to the city of Dover, I think we need to cover all aspects of the city of Dover as a whole. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilman Hare.
I think I agree with Councilman Sutter, and if they're going to do a review of everything, I think they need to review everything, as they are an advisory committee. They're not... They don't set their plan of action. They make recommendations to council to approve or disapprove. So I think they need to review that also.
See no further discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries, eight to one. Councilman Anderson voting no. We now go to Agenda Item Number 10, City Managers Announcements.
Thank you, Council President Slavin. Just a reminder that spring is a very busy time of the year across all... Just a reminder that spring is a very busy time of the year across all departments in the city, and the number of service calls tends to go up for everybody, but I'd like to take just a minute and thank the entire workforce for all the efforts that they're putting forward for the citizens. Springtime, we will see many people coming into Dover for old Dover days, NASCAR and Firefly. This is an excellent time for us to showcase the city and the opportunities that are afforded in our boundaries. So again, thank you, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Koenig. Agenda Item Number 11, Councilmember Announcements. Councilman Sutler.
I wanted to thank the City Manager, Scott Koenig, and Amory Townsend, planner, and also the Dover Police Department, representation, and Sean Lynn, 31st District House Representative, and all those who participated in our meeting, Union Baptist Church, in regards to the Simon Circle and Lincoln Park issues. I really want to thank the city for promptly getting involved and starting to repave some of the dilapidated streets. Also want to thank Council President Timothy Slavin for initiating that movement, and just want to say thank you very much on behalf of the 4th District.
Thank you for your continued efforts, both Councilman Anderson, Councilman Sutler. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you very much. Of course, I agree, and I would also add to that, over the past year, the places that have provided venues, most of the time free of charge, and we want to thank each and every one of them for their participation, as well as that of the citizens. And we have, you know, please look forward for more events. There's been a great deal of participation, and even though there were a few people who didn't show up because of a little activity that happened to take place with a little gunfire, which it was, I think, in a way, it was a very good thing for everyone to understand firsthand what we're talking about and why these are important. And I, and I was pleased, as the state news said, that in spite of everything, around 30 people came out and participated and made their views known, and that was a, I just want to thank the citizens, because they matter and they're being, getting more engaged than they have been in many, many years. So thank you very much, and I look forward to, also wanted to say, the Youth Advisory Committee is going to need more people, adult and, and three to four youth, so if anyone's interested, there's definitely positioned something. Thank you.
Any other announcements from members of council? Councilman Hare.
Just briefly, this Saturday night coming up, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the AMC Museum, there's a new organization, it's called the Dover Military Support. It's an organization created to support the active-duty military, the National Guard, all branches that are stationed in Delaware for needs of the active duty, working with the Good Shepherd Fund from the First Sergeants Association. There's a lot of programs out there for veterans, but very few for active-duty needs. So they're having, we're having our kickoff that night, 5:30, we've got some nice auction items, some food, and anyone would like to come, all donations are accepted, there's no charge to come.
Thank you, Councilman Hare.
Could you give us the address?
It's AMC Museum, I don't know what the address is.
Off Route Nine, off Route Nine on the base. Other members of council, any announcements? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Neal, seconded by Councilman Lewis. All in favor, signify by saying aye.